Provide. You have called this City Council meeting of February 27, 2024 to order. Clerk please call the roll.
Boris Fromme.
Here.
Dick Marshke.
Here.
Jim Banzma.
Here.
Marie Fenske.
Here.
Christine Schmitz.
Here.
Bryce Remy.
Here.
The roll can stand. The roll is ready. The roll is ready. The roll is ready.
United States of America. United Republic of America. One nation, under God, and in this one. With liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Is there a motion to act on council minutes of January 23, February 6, 15, 7?
Second.
Moving discussion. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Do we have any public appearances tonight? All right, last call. All right, moving on. Personal and Finance Committee report with Boris.
Yep, so Personal Finance Committee met February 19 here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. Everyone present, no public appearances. Motion passed to approve the January 15 minutes. Uh, motion passed to approve refurbishment of 1996 Pierce Quantum Ariel. Uh, we also had a motion to approve the disposal records from an inspo court that passed. A discussion regarding the public safety building security camera upgrades. Uh, discussion around the Aquatic Center sponsorship event policy, no action taken. Got a motion approved for the Aquatic Center fee pool day policy. Another motion to approve the request uh, from the March area Chamber of Commerce for fund payment of the Bird City application fee. Had discussion around 2024 Aquatic Center passes and the rates. Motion passed to approve the master POC and radio upgrades and the Clinton Tower radio panel improvements. No motion to approve the January bills. And we set our next meeting for Monday, the 18th of March, 6:00 PM here at City Council, Bird City Hall. And then we adjourned at 7:16 PM. Thanks Boris.
Next on the agenda is the Public Works and Development Committee, Jim.
Yeah, Public Works and Development Committee was called to order at 6:00 PM by Chairperson Jim Banzma. Members present, Banzma, Fenske, and Schmitz. Members absent, none. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske to approve the December 6, 2023 minutes as there was no meeting in January. All voting aye, motion carried, public appearances, none. Water treatment plant facility plan. We had a presentation from MSA representative, addressed outstanding concerns regarding project approach. Council to take action to proceed with the project, including an agreement with MSA. Scheduled public hearing at 2026, beginning of construction. Discussion on snow removal during recent snow events. Discussion on onboarding and re-ordinance. TPW update, snow removal and cleanup downtown. Repair broken equipment, tree removal and trimming, equipment and building cleanup. Wastewater, water update, working on facility plan. WWTP permit, snow removal, and training of a new hired employee. Set the next meeting date for Thursday, March 7, 2024, at 6:00 PM at TPW conference room. Motion by Fenske, second by Schmitz to adjourn. All voting aye, the meeting adjourned at 8:30 PM.
One other thing is just happened to work out tonight. Um, listen, I just wanted to introduce our new employee. This is John Goodman. Um, he is one that we're training now, um, doing a really good job so far. He's already gotten through his general wastewater class and has signed up for some testing coming up, free his licensing.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Otherwise, doing an awesome job, thank him kindly.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have the Public Safety Committee, Murray.
Public Safety Committee met at six o'clock on February 6, 2024. Members present, Fenske and Remy. Members absent, Fromme. Uh, we made a motion to approve the minutes. Uh, passed, no public appearances. Um, motion by Remy, second by Fenske to amend the ATV, UTV ordinance to read as follows. No person shall operate any all-terrain vehicle within the city of Horcon at a speed in excess of the posted speed limit. Uh, motion passed. Uh, Police Department provided a monthly update. Peterman provided an update on the emergency management tabletop exercise that was set for February 20th. And we had no liquor operator and/or retailer licenses to review. Uh, next meeting is March 12, 6 o'clock, Public Safety Building. Motion to adjourn at 6:15, and that was passed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Park and Rec Door Report, Bryce.
The Park and Rec Board meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM by Chairperson Remy. Members present, Remy, Marshke, Krul, and Boy. Members absent, Mookie. Uh, there was a motion to approve last month's minutes. There was a public appearance. Uh, there was a park report along with an aquatic report and a rec report. Uh, there was an update shared on Friends of Horcon Park's fundraising. Uh, discussed the two buildings that are not in City's renewable buildings at the moment. There was a motion to approve the rental fee of those. Uh, we discussed the District Park Master Plan. There was a motion by Remy, second by Krul, to approve the Horcon Historical Society requests. Um, and a lot of motions to approve the Horcon Historical Society's requests that will be on your agenda tonight. Uh, we set next meeting date for Monday, March 4, at TPW conference room at 6:00 PM. We adjourned at 7:02 PM.
We do not have a plan revision. All right, for my report, first, welcome in room Chief of the Police Department, Dan Furseth, he's here tonight. You guys haven't met him yet. Thank you. We'll say the EM tabletop that we had, was it last week or week before? It was last week.
Yeah, that's really good.
That was fantastic. I mean, that was even better than the first one, I thought. Very realistic, very good job being set up by Warner, again, very helpful. We had recently had a meeting regarding the bridge and dam. I think that that really has a chance. We'll see how that goes. But right now, the meeting that we had with Rep. Oring, VNR, DOT, Mandelwold, Kristen and I, really, it really got us going in the right direction. I look forward to seeing how that turns out. We'll thank the uh, City Hall staff. They've been dominating the audit again for the last two weeks. And then, congrats to all our winner athletes. You guys all did well. Wrestlers, some wrestlers left the state, girls did well, boys played tonight at 7:30. So good luck to all of them and congrats on a good season. Moving on. Action on ordinance number 2024-10. It's an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 19-2A3, Library Board, constituting a quorum of Municipal Code of the City of Horcon. Do you have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Any questions? The only comment I have is that this change would then mirror what is in State statute.
Great. Any comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next is an action on ordinance 2024-11, which is an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 424-21B2, theft of library material possession without consent of the Municipal Code of the City of Horcon. Do you have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
This ordinance looks very much like other community ordinances, with the exception that ours had the procedure for how overdue these were going to be processed. We are no longer in the paper world. All of our software is capable of notifying patrons that they have things that are due back to the library, either by text, phone message, or email. By eliminating this must send a one-week notice, a two-week notice, a four-week notice, uh, would then allow us to save on postage, first off, still be able to communicate with patrons in other ways other than paper, and still be able to maintain the statutory requirement that we, we don't hear from them within a period of time the letter board will set, we will send the bill, which then uh, acts as the paper notification meeting statutory requirements.
Any other questions for Alex?
Thank you. I feel like that's a really cost-effective solution. Thank you.
I'll find a way to use $600.
All right, yeah, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, act on resolution 2024-01, migratory bird day resolution.
Included in your packet is this resolution. This resolution is adopted annually and will be included um, when the Chamber of Commerce applies for their annual migratory or Bird City application.
Thank you all.
One second.
Any comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Next, act on East Walnut, North Cedar Street Reconstruction Project Preliminary Engineering Design Services Agreement.
So, I'll do just a little, uh, my intro on this is gonna be very brief. So, item 15 and item 16 go rather hand in hand. You'll see two proposals that are included in your agenda. One is for uh, some preliminary design services for East Walnut North Street, North Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. Also included in the packet um, is a contract for 2024 CDVG application along with environmental review services. If you want them to apply for the CDVG grant and have a chance of getting the grant, you must approve the engineering services. So that's why you're gonna talk about these things together, but I did put approving the engineering services prior to the grant, because if you do not approve that, don't bother approving the grant. And now the experts, either Cody can give a better intro on the project, or um, we can go right to the experts.
Let's go to the experts.
All right. Um, so you have a handy dandy little map in front of you. Um, so the area that's um, blue, um, that area was surveyed. Um, and so residents were, were sent um, a survey as to whether their income was above or below a certain level, depending on their family income. Um, and that came back to show that 58.82% of the residents in that area are low to moderate income. Um, so that means that this area qualifies for a CDVG Community Development grant. Um, and so that means that um, you can apply up to a million dollars of grant um, for a $1.5 million project. So essentially, it's a two-thirds match. So for two, you get uh, for every $2 a grant, you get up, you get um, a $1 match, yeah. Um, so um, yeah, so we looked at this project. Um, and um, I guess first of all, do you have any questions about the survey or the project area yet? I do just want to thank Christine and Bryce for their very hard work in getting those um, those surveys done and in. I believe it was, we mailed them out of City Hall, I believe, two or three times, and you guys went and knocked on doors two or three times. So thank you again very much.
That's a lot of work.
For that. But well worth it, if you give a million dollars. So, yeah, and, and so what we're looking to do is um, like the scope of the project is gonna be to replace all of the um, water main and um, sewer that's underneath that portion, um, which sounds like it's very needed. There's a lot of issues in that area. Um, so um, that would be great. Um, and I, I think it would be a very good application. It would be very competitive. On this uh, the spreadsheet that's in front of you. Um, so what this is, is to show you of the applications that, that MSA submitted last year on behalf of communities. Um, these 14 communities, the green ones are the ones that were awarded. The red ones were not awarded. Um, so one of the main areas I want to point out is the Community Distress Score. So that, that is a sets, a score that changes annually. Um, it looks at um, a variety of, of data points, um, like your median household income, your tax rate, and things like that, and associated points with it. Um, so it's not really something you can control too much, but you guys did get 50, you had 52 points for this year's um, applicants, or um, for this year's application. Um, so you can see compared to the one, the, the projects that were awarded last year, you guys fall in that green area. And so we feel, you know, we can't guarantee that you would get funny, but we feel very confident that, that you guys would have a high-scoring project um, looking at that.
And this is a 2024 grant, but the project will be done next year.
Yes, yes. So we would find out in about July if you're awarded. Um, so the application was in, in mid-May. You would find out in July, end of July, beginning of August if you're awarded. Um, and then, yeah, we would probably bid the project over winter, and then it would start next spring, summer. Do also want to point out that the, the surveys that made us eligible are good for five years. So in a worst-case scenario, if we did not get it this year, we would be able to apply in the following year. Um, also going along with this, this is kind of how, what brought me on board is the, it's a 13, $14,000 application fee, and you don't know if you're going to get it. Meanwhile, you're gonna spend, what, 80,000, 90,000 on plans? But these plans essentially can sit on your shelf. So even if you don't do the project next year, or the year after that, you could essentially do it four years from now, and ultimately, we all know that nothing goes down in price, and so ultimately, the plans could cost 14,000 more, so you will not have lost anything. This is definitely a project that is on our five-year plan.
Yep.
And it's been on Cody's radar, and you know, Public Works has talked about this rather in depth, so.
Unfortunately, the road needs a lot. Uh, you're looking at a road surface that has a low case rating, so the surface is bad. Uh, we have multiple server backups, we have major root problems, piping problems on the sanitary, and then we also have lead problems with the water main. It's undersized. Uh, we have a bunch of galvanize services, we picked multiple. There's a lot of money spent every year just repairing this road. So from my aspect, I didn't feel comfortable just, you know, pushing someone, or like trying to push for a mill overly on a road that needs a full reconstruction. And this would give us the opportunity to get a fairly decent-sized grant from all.
The other, the other thing I want to bring up too, is Kristen said, um, the project readiness score, um, we put in there 40 points for you guys, but 30 of those points are the um, plans and specifications that would come out of the design contract that you would be approving tonight. So that's, that's why she was saying it's really imperative that you um, approve the engineering, because without those 30 points, your score drops down significantly. So, so we are assuming that you would, you know, do that work and, and get those points.
Well, as Kristen mentioned, I mean, it was on our radar screen anyhow, we're gonna, we're gonna eventually do it. So I mean, this, this is almost like a potential present dropping out of the sky, so, I mean, my opinion, this is a term like, uh, Public Works Development Committee, I think it's right thing to do right now is act and at least attempt to get the grant.
I agree, and I can say like, walking the street with Kristen, or Christian, I'm sorry. Uh, the road is pretty rough, like, I bottomed out with that a couple times. And it's a...
Yeah, and I think the citizens will appreciate it too, a lot of the ones that we talked to.
Kristen, where's the funds come from?
So, um, it'll be coming out of between capital project, water, and wastewater, and although these are not budgeted, this will still be something that you would be able to accomplish in 2024, because we know we're flexible with um, funds that are not general fund, because general fund are the ones that are the loving dollars.
Right. So the...
So they'd be...
Engineering fees will be paid from those.
Yeah, we don't have the split right now.
No.
But once, if you guys would approve it, then we'll have the split between the Fund 425, which is capital project, Fund 600 for water, and Fund 610 for wastewater.
And then if awarded, when we do the budget this fall, we would...
Yep.
Planning for this, the... Hopefully coming in there 1.5. Dino.
Yeah, you actually want to be above 1.5 to maximize the grant.
Right.
So, but, yeah. I'd love for it to be there.
I'll write back Washington, though. I'll approve the inventory contract for East Walnut Street.
I'll second.
Any other comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, as I understand, this is a motion to approve the professional services agreement from MSA Professional Services, Inc., in the amount of $84,870 for preliminary engineering design for the East Walnut and North Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
There's 16 different letters, isn't it?
That's acceptable.
Is there a motion to act on the 2024 CDVG application environmental renew services agreement for East Walnut and North Cedar?
Slow move.
Second.
Any comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, as I understand, this is a motion to approve the professional services agreement from MSA Professional Services, Inc., in the amount of $14,000 for a 2024 CDVG application and environmental review for the East Walnut and North Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is acting on the lower rates concession buildings located at Dish and Riverbend. Bryce.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Uh, in your packets, we have discovered that we have two buildings that weren't listed in our rental building, so this was brought up by Cody, uh, just to make sure that we're all on the same page for our buildings across the board. Uh, so I would like to make a motion to approve the rental rates of the concession buildings located in Dish and Riverbend Park to match the rest of the building. Should be $70 saved for residents, $100 saved for non-residents, with a deposit in the amount of $50.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, these would follow the same rental guidelines that we use for any of the other perk buildings.
Yes, that's just they're currently missing from it.
Right.
There's been a, there was a request submitted to City Hall to have the rental fee waived. Um, and so this led to looking in the lovely little packet, and it was noted that it wasn't, wasn't listed on there, so Cody was tasked to speak into the park board about it, and here we are.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, acting on a request for use of Riverbend by the Horcon Historical Society for the 2024 Living History Days, Bryce.
I will make a motion to approve the Horcon Historical Society's request for use of Riverbend Park for 2024 Living History Days.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Listen closely to see if I dug in your brain for all this correct information. Motion to approve the Horcon Historical Society's request for use of Riverbend Park, May 10 through 12, 2024, including overnight accommodations, May 6 through 13, 2024, for reenactors and demonstrators, including use of electricity for 2024 Living History Days.
Yes, that's exactly what I said.
All right, Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Number 19 is acting on a carrying and discharging of weapons in the park as part of 2024 Living History Days, Bryce.
I will make a motion to approve the Horcon Historical Society's request to allow carrying and discharging weapons in Riverbend Park as part of the Living History Days for 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next is acting on a question of the Horcon Historical Society to place a banner in Riverbend Park promoting the 2024 Living History Days, Bryce.
I will make a motion to approve the requests from the Horcon Historical Society to place a banner in Riverbend Park promoting 2024 Living History Days.
Second. Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Moving on in the packet. Number 22, acting on the refurbishment of the 19...
No, you missed the horses.
Oh, horses.
We need horses.
Horses, all right. Request from Horcon Historical Society to have horses down at the park as part of 2024 Living History Days, Bryce.
I will make a motion to approve those requests from the Horcon Historical Society to have horses in Riverbend Park for Living History Days.
Second.
Any discussion on the horses?
I would just like to say thank you to the Historical Society. They always do a good job cleaning up after them every year. That's never going to complain to the park board or the council, so thank you.
Thank you, guys, for allowing us to have it down there.
Any other comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Am I missing anything?
No, no.
All right. Act now, 22, acting on the refurbishment of the uh, Ariel, 1996 Pierce Quantum, Boris.
Make a motion to approve the refurbishment of the 1996 Pierce Quantum Ariel in the amount of $537,000, $537,783.
One second.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Boris Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Moving on in the packet. Jim, item 23, acting on the disposal of public records from the county court, Boris.
Make a motion to approve the disposal of records from the municipal court. In your package, sorry, go ahead.
One second.
All right, music like records dating from 2015 to 2017 for requisitions, monthly financials, citations, dismissals, appeals, and transfers. Any other discussion?
Do we keep that electronically anyways?
No.
No.
I just care what costs thousands of dollars to get that all electronically, our records.
We have lots of paper.
Any other discussion? Now please go to rule.
So motion to authorize the disposal of municipal court public records is outlined on a memo dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next we have a request from the Marsh area Chamber of Commerce to fund payment for twenty twenty-four Bird City application fee. Forrest?
Well, so motion to approve the Marsh area Chamber of Commerce to fund the payment for the twenty twenty-four Bird City application fee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Great, now please go to rule.
So motion to approve payment of the twenty twenty-four Bird City application fee in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Item twenty-five acting on the master PLC radio upgrades and Clinton Tower radio panel improvement. Water and wastewater funded. Forrest?
Oh my, there it is. Motion to approve the master PLC and radio upgrades and Clinton Tower radio panel improvement in the amount of ninety-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Can you explain a little?
Uh, this is just our, when we, a while back, the main PLC at our plant, which is the main computer system that reaches out and communicates to all of our offsites, um, is maxed out. We didn't know that, um, so we built two new lift stations that are not able to be put onto the system. So we had no way to monitor them remotely, so if there was a backup or anything, we couldn't respond. This is a way to fix it. We ran this through MSA as well, so this is compatible with our new wastewater plant and will actually ease some of the problems with converting when we do, when actually we do build upgrades.
For the Marsh, is the Marsh crossing lift station actually active?
No, no.
City View's obviously is.
City View is, and this will be going online, the Marsh crossing will be going online, I think it's April.
Any other questions? Or comments? If not, please go to rule.
So motion to accept a proposal from Altronnax Control Services LW Allen in the amount of ninety-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for master PLC radio upgrades and Clinton Tower radio panel improvements. Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is action on the free pool day sponsorship policy.
I will make a motion to approve the free pool day sponsorship policy.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions for Bryce?
So we haven't done this before, right? This is brand new?
This is brand new. Uh, I will say, like, touching on this as a high level overview, Fox Lake is a very, I guess, similar, because they're just newly, newly, but their pool attendance was within a couple hundred of ours and their sponsorship fee was a lot less. I don't want to do that and bankrupt the pool. So we decided to set a cap for free pool days for July and August, because that's typically our lowest pool attendance days, and Monday through Thursday. Weeks like Fourth of July would be exactly, because that's going to be crazy. This essentially would be a trial run this year to make sure, like, we're not killing our budget. We'll find out the clinical cost next year, but the park board wanted to see it low enough that someone like Ice Cream Station could step in and pick up the sponsorship tab or the blue hair and someone like that. And we do have in there, there will be no stores that are not for all ages, so no adult stores, no liquor stores. I'm going to leave it at that. So do you have any questions?
All right, if there are any questions, please call the rule.
Bryce Fromme?
Aye.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Great, next on the agenda, action on the twenty twenty-four Aquatic Center pass rate schedule. Forrest?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Aquatic Center pass rate schedule, um, for the rate in your packet.
Second.
So we're adding a non-resident rate? And do we have any questions on it? I assume it would just be Dick and Marie.
I personally, you know, when you saw Columbus or Palm and stuff like that, I think it's better to start with a higher rate for non-residents than it is to go to two years from low rates like the rest.
This doesn't affect the library's free pass?
No.
Then they're still able to give it to their patrons, whether they're resident or not, or not?
Correct. Those are just kind of trying to prepare for if we have to get like parents' wages increased next year, see how this helps us.
How many non-resident passes do we sell, actually?
There was more non-resident passes than there were residents, if I remember correctly.
Really?
Sorry, I did not bring that sheet.
I have it. I have all the paperwork. Is there one in here, one of them that says it? I have all your paperwork.
There should be.
If you want.
I will note that does not include what City Hall sold, it's just from the YNTA.
I don't see it looked on there. Resident, non-resident.
I think I saw it, I don't know if she too, yeah, all right.
You do get a lot of non-residents. I mean, just even, I know from the limited sales that we provide up at City Hall, that was always normal.
But I think this is the best thing for our, for our city.
Well, and we, years ago, we used to have resident, non-resident. A few years ago, we switched it and I don't know why the council decided to do that.
I don't think it's going to change. I, I don't think it's going to push it on. Do we have any other comments on it or questions?
Well, I think every other city charges resident versus non-resident, which is why everything, so it seems like it would make sense.
I think it's a good idea. Your residents are already very the tax burden and bother in the pool.
The one thing too, there is full of reciprocal days. I forget the exact dates they are, but that's like the YNTA policy.
Because I want to focus. All right, there are any further comments? Please call the rule.
So motion to set the twenty twenty-four Aquatic Center pass rates at fifty dollars for resident single pass, seventy-five dollars for non-resident single pass, a hundred and fifty dollars for resident family pass and a hundred and seventy-five dollars for non-resident family pass. Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is action on the public safety building security camera system upgrade. Forrest?
Um, the...
So we had a long discussion. Dan's got an updated quote. I have updated quote. I don't know if Cody brought it along.
Updated quote's not the one we have in our packet, right?
Correct, because it came after the packet.
Of course, isn't Bryce or...
So if you're doing, like, the main regular, I shouldn't say regular building, the building that was envisioned to have the upgrades during the, during the budget process, that quote is in at twenty-seven, five, twenty-four, seventy-two. And then there's a second portion of the quote that, um, I believe is for, um, like, the fire EMS parking lot areas.
Uh, entry doors.
Entry doors area, yeah. Anyway, areas, I'm assuming, that don't already have cameras.
That do not.
So, um, and that adds an additional six thousand three hundred and sixty-six, thirty-four. So when you add the two, then they're over budget.
How much?
Eleven hundred. We're only in February. You've already hit contingency fund. Last month for police department budget, which is that came in over budget. You're going to act on something tonight that's potentially going to hit contingency. You're only in February.
Is there a way we just do one part and not the other part? Or would that six thousand dollar quote be more expensive if we did them separate?
My understanding is, Cody said that...
It's a local contractor, sort of, you know, like trip charges or anything, and that's why we looked at it separately, because the one was kind of a wand. And, uh, as far as I understood it, the one at the police department was a necessity. I don't believe it's functioning. Chief probably don't weigh better than I would.
Yeah, the current, uh, coming in on this, like, the current DVR, the cameras are there, but the DVR is not working. It's sealed coax, uh, digital IP cameras or anything like that, so if something were to happen anywhere in the building, we'd have no record of it.
The, yeah, the current budget contains thirty-two thousand seven sixty-four.
So when we go to do this next year to the other part of it, the other doors that don't have cameras, it would just be a difference in cost from what it is this year to next year, it's not anything.
As far as I understand, yes.
Yeah. And this is with integrated repair and information services?
Yes.
Is that like that?
Yes.
Don't look that closely. And Christian, the number is twenty-seven, five, two, four, seven, two?
Two, seven, five, two, four, point, seven, two, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's funds there. I mean, there's, I mean, it's still early in the year. This is something that certainly, maybe come October, things are shaking off differently for the safety building, police department, fire department, EMS. You can, or even contingency fund. I mean, you can take money from somewhere else, put it there and do the other portion. Maybe even this year, you know, it's, it's an option.
Yeah, I think we need to get the main system done right away.
Yeah.
The other one, we can wait until later this year or do it early next year. I don't think it's critical.
Agreed.
It's critical.
Agreed.
I just think there's some other options we can look at doing with the safety building at the same time.
Do you want to make a motion at the moment?
I'll make a motion to approve the security camera update to the main safety building as budgeted in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars, seventy-two cents from integrated repair and information services.
One second.
All right, any other questions on it? Like, so I didn't, I didn't see the, the more recent one. What is different than program twenty-five to the twenty-seven? From what's here, what's different?
Well, I met with the chief and then the guy that would be doing the install, sell the system to us. Walked through, the chief found some stuff that needed to be added, and then he also found some stuff on the secondary system that needed to be added for the generator. That way, it's got battery backups. Uh, we missed a couple of cameras. I think we added one and missed one on the first pass that we did find, because it was dead and we didn't know it was there.
Yeah, so it's basically two extra cameras and a swing rack and two hundred and fifty more feet.
And, uh,
Battery backup.
And a battery backup.
All right. Great.
And the battery backup just absorbs, absorbs the shock load from the generator.
That's good. Good, good. All right. Any other questions for Cody or Chief? All right, now please call the rule.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Dick Marshke?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
All right, next on the agenda is the radio broadcast show of the Horicon School District to include funding.
Want me to just go and take it?
Go ahead, there's no name.
All right.
I can explain it after if someone wants to make a motion.
That's what I was thinking. I'll make a motion to approve the radio broadcast show of the Horicon School District to include funding of six hundred dollars.
From where?
In contingency.
All right, I'll go through it a little bit quick. So we had our first episode last Wednesday on WBEV. It's actually a Horicon resident who was the host. Her name's Amy Brandt. And it's basically split halfway between the school district and the city. First go around, the school district definitely got a little more time. They're going to switch off rules first each day. And he brought in, uh, some of the members of the cast of Annie, which is kind of neat, so trying to sell people to come to there. It was more of an intro. Going forward, one, there's two things. It's going to be broadcast live on Daily Dodge TV, so you can watch it streaming as well as listen to it on the radio. And we're going to take calls live, which soon as I got to the car, I had like four, because I brought out. My particular part, I talked about winter parking and how, like, I told Jim, I'm not getting rid of winter park. So that's the, I was bringing that up and that's the cause. I had my car. So basically, what were the school district, the Horicon Foundation? And I know they brought it up at the chamber. It's not going well with the Mabel people at the chamber, but the Horicon people at the chamber have been pretty, pretty much behind it. But I guess I, there's no way that I would ask for two thousand. And it doesn't even have to necessarily be this one, but just like six hundred, just to show that the city was investing. When I plan on bringing in people from the city too going forward when there's a big project. I think one of the things I was thinking is, when we get a little farther in, we were going to be talking about, say, the wastewater treatment plan and the project. It's probably a better idea if we talk to the people, you know, kind of go along with all these postcards and stuff that are going out. It gives us a chance to talk about what we're doing and reach maybe the older audience in town that still listens to the radio. And the good thing is it does stream. It, you know, you can go back and listen all the time. Like, like, I think you were on it the week before, or the week before I was. And Be-Ram School this or does it, Horicon School this or does it? There's a couple, like an Edward Jones guy and stuff like that, too. Basically, it's the cheapest way I could figure, it was more Rich Atwood's idea, he brought me on, but to sell Horicon in a way that didn't cost a whole heck of a lot of money to sell Horicon. And this investment would probably be cheaper than one mailing, depending on what you're mailing. So I told Rich that I would try, and this is my try.
And you can share the broadcast, you know, like, right after, right as, as soon as it came up online, I shared it to, you know, all of our social media pages, and it got a lot of comments. People listened, you know? Maybe they're not going to listen when it's live, but they went to the link and listened to it off their computers or their phones or whatever, so.
Then I did write on my page, you know, if there's anyone that had any ideas that they want to hear on the show, send me an email. And I did get people to write, they want to talk about the, one of the things, can you talk about the history of Horicon? It's a Horicon historical days are coming up, you know, just, you know, little things like that. And we have given the ideas and stuff they want to hear. And I know that we do the social media. I know you, but you guys have been door knocking and there's a million different ways to reach out to people in our town, but this way we're giving everyone the same message at once. And if, when, they're pretty picky on this. It's like, I can't talk necessarily about individual companies, which is weird, unless they're a sponsor of WBEV already. But anybody that's a city employee, like if Bryce wanted to come and talk about the park at, that they're putting in in Bowling Green, or any example, any of us, that is allowed. That's the part that's kind of nice. So it's not just going to be me up there talking. It'd be anybody from the city that has something to say or share with any event that's going on.
I will say kudos to you and to Rich Atwood for doing it, because I was actually listening while I was at work. Got a little distracted and missed a meeting, so that was fun, but I thought it was really good, really informative. There isn't a lot of stuff that I don't totally know about, so I was like, it was informative to me, too.
The people at the radio station are super supportive, too, especially Amy. You know, she always invested. She looks there. She's always been a huge supporter of, when we're on there for the Horicon Kings Program, you know?
And I feel like it was more of like a casual convo, not like, like, she's grilling you and she's like, I hate you, or...
Yeah, compared to when you do, like, community comments or when I do the Saturday show, I don't know, none of it, like, for... This one, it was a conversation rather than someone who came in with a, a bucket of questions where they're just asking over and over. Like you said, really, this was more of a conversation. I mean, anyone who listened to the first episode, obviously, I'm like, I'm not going to lie, Rich has got a lot more personality than I do. He just knows.
He's got his microphone.
And that's okay. But there's going to be times where, like, every other time, I would get the weed on, so I can hog a little more of the, of the microphone. So it went well, but this is, like I said, this is just my ask. I don't want to use up the whole weight on this agenda either. Do a lot more important things.
We already made a motion, right?
Well, yeah, a couple, couple of things. There is a, uh, this was brought to us in our January personnel finance committee meeting and, uh, our, the committee's director was to, that we wanted to look at it once more in Portland Council. And that didn't happen. That, we didn't discuss it all in our February meetings, so, um, that fell through. And I guess jump ahead to the next thing and I got it and said, I appreciate this. I worked it. I listened to it live last Wednesday. Heard you guys on radio. Uh, as you kind of said, I think for Horicon to benefit from this, you've got to be prepared to take fifty percent of the, of the show, I tried. And, and I know what I mean, and I understand. There's going to be certain months where they've, they've got something a little bit more special going on. But I guess let's just be very careful that we, we get our dollars and stuff.
But we're not paying half.
But this is...
Right, I know.
Because the council...
You're still going to get half?
Because, like, the chamber and stuff, they're sponsoring.
Okay.
And the foundation is giving money for the...
For the, okay.
So we're entitled to half the time.
Yeah. I was hiding this. Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't know that. I thought we were only like...
I mean, if this, if this something goes well and we find where we can use the full time every month, you don't just look at budgeting it for 20, 25, have a whole spot. If we, if we felt that was something that we want, well, this is, this is an opportunity for us to try it out for one of those items that we don't spend less than a thousand dollars usually on anything these days. And this is one of those that I think is a, I think it's a cheap, uh, marketing cost for us for the, for us to, to go over and get out of it.
Right, and I agree 100% with that, but I'm just saying, it's a, well, it's, you know, equal.
Yeah, I, I...
Equal time. I mean, that was pretty much monopolized by, okay, Josh, that's good, but here's what's happening over here.
I think it'll ebb and flow.
That's exactly, it's, it was brought up after when the, when the radio went off.
I think it'll ebb and flow. Some weeks, you're not gonna maybe have stuff, is, you know, school are not gonna have stuff, so, yeah.
Every month is different.
Right.
I did go into eight things. We got to hit four.
You do have Dick, let's read the other street from Apple. We can have him go over and chat with him, too.
I think this one was just different, because it was the first thing. And then maybe couples just need to be reminded to that it's half now. But I mean, my goodness, I think it's a new opportunity. Yeah, for $600 for some public relations for the city, I think that's a great deal.
So will the elected officials be joining you on these radio shows? I'm just inquiring on behalf of the other department heads that are just waiting for me to ask.
You're asking for a friend.
Yeah, I'm asking for a friend.
Okay.
The other department heads don't want to be on the radio.
Oh, I don't like, I don't think anyone's gonna be forced to be on the radio.
I wouldn't have to be forced here.
Fantastic, because the other department heads don't want to be on the radio.
I think the council president is a representative of the council.
I can talk on your behalf, because like, my pal Chris Jacob said, City Hall is a great...
Bryce, I will go on with you. How about that?
Yeah, we could call it...
Actually, Cody, Cody and I have discussed this. We'll go on together, too.
Yeah, we can have it be like Marsh Margarita time.
All right.
Something to get on there, probably some of those, uh, representative from our MPDC, call it, because I think that's kind of like a community cell. You know, and I didn't, I think, I think you're with, um, most folks would be beneficial to all the people in radio land.
That was part of my, we had to submit our, kind of, our ideas, and I had that in for me. They do not air in June or July because of school. So for the right now, you know, February, March, April, May, nothing in June or July, and it kicks up again when school starts again in August. I would definitely want to do it with Marine Park prior to that building, we're gonna come in fall.
So it's in but schools.
Well, Rich just could help do it for us, sorry. It's supposed to be 12 months before they might be in the parks.
I'm sure if we wanted to pay more, we could get on those two weeks, or two months, I mean.
I, I, to be honest, I won't be here either those turn times either. At least the July one will not be.
I'll take that for you.
Does Claire tell Apple that we paid more?
To be gotten more.
Well, I appreciate you guys listening.
So, been in May, want to do approval? I didn't hear a second.
I'll second.
Oh.
Sorry.
All right, there's no other discussion. Quick, please call the roll.
Uh, so this is a motion to approve, uh, $600 funding for a radio broadcast, uh, sharing with the school, Horkon School District, uh, to be paid for utilizing contingency funds. Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we are, are the operator licenses from Marie.
Marie, before you start on these operator licenses, there were two of them that were hung up because we had no chief at the time. And I had consulted with, uh, we didn't have the interim chief either at the time, and so I had consulted with the mayor, who was the department head of the police department in that absence. And, uh, one of the sergeants had recommended two of them for denial, saying that they were fraudulent applications.
I got the other way, two anger, one power, fraudulent applications.
There's two of them, both, so both original ones came back to me, marked fraudulent and recommended for denial. Um, this was all covered with the mayor, and the process was tried to guide the sergeant in, into making, touching base with the entity to ensure that they weren't fraudulent, but perhaps maybe forgot to disclose information from 20 years ago. Um, and then other things that are maybe just not even relevant to the being able to be caused for not, for non-approval. Um, in the end, one entity applied again, and this time disclosed all of the information and was recommended for approval. The other one did not make contact with the sergeant and still maintained as being not recommended for approval. Um, that one is Lisa Nicholson. Um, I believe if they say on her operator license, on the application. I guess, I will call this my opinion, and I did exchange emails with the mayor as well. I don't think it's fraudulent that she forgot that in 2007, she wrote a bad check. I think she probably just forgot. Um, and, and a worthless check from 2007 is not a reason to deny an operator license. So, um, you're seeing all of them on the, on here tonight, because I don't believe any of them meet the criteria for denial.
I, sorry.
Go ahead, Bert.
I, on the one that I see as listed as denial, my understanding, it looks like she's already working for another quick trip, potentially even selling alcohol there. So...
Well, because those entities were given a provisional license when they applied. So they come into my office and they apply for a provisional. I run them through CCAP. So if I don't see anything on CCAP, I'm issuing a provisional license. I will not pull a provisional license, even if the chief recommends denial, because the recommendation that is on the back of that form that comes from the chief or sergeant is only a recommendation. You guys are the only entity that can decide whether or not a, a license is granted, not the chief or sergeant. Nobody else can. So I will not pull a provisional operator license until you guys have said denial. That being said, these can't sit and wait either. I mean, they need to be acted on, and they need to be dealt with. So, um, these two got a little bit hung up, and the mayor was, was aware of them.
I agree. And like my feelings on this one, I was in first grade in 2007. I couldn't even tell you what I did in first grade. I'm just saying.
Over eighty?
Ten three.
Nine.
He was writing bad checks, too, but...
Were there the candy checks?
Yeah.
I don't know, was I? That wasn't my strong suit.
Seventeen years ago.
That's the click note version of the, of the story behind the two.
So I have a couple additional things. So I know that we had the safety meeting for February a week early this month. And I know that these two that were, uh, marked as approved and accurate came in like a day after that meeting. So I understand why they didn't go to the safety committee. But this one, which was submitted in January, according to the paperwork, and then was marked as fraudulent, didn't, it was after the January meeting that it came back to City Hall.
Both of the, both of the fraudulent ones were submitted in January and have been sitting on my desk. They did not go to the, your committee, because they sat on my desk waiting to see what was going to happen with them.
Even in the, even into February, they had, did not send it to return...
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I was just, well, I'm just reading the...
Yes. And the Public Safety Committee, as well as all committees of the city, with exception of the zoning board of appeals, your advisory committees, you don't make decisions. This council makes decisions. So...
Agreed. Well, then if they don't need to go to the safety committee at all, then they don't need to go there, but that's...
They can go, but they're not required to go.
Understood, but it would be nicer to have had this conversation, because this is the only one in a year and a half that I've seen marked this way. So I, and I, I understand, and I appreciate your explanation. I'm just saying that if they can come to the safety committee, we could have an earlier discussion on it, rather than have it, you know...
Not till we shoot you down. I just think with our staffing, though, I think this kind of whole thing, and I haven't.
Amen.
I'm not trying to defend Chris or her, or her or the boss.
They did.
Yeah.
That's, and that's acceptable.
Because I just gave you the click note version of the story.
I'm going through the same thing, being short-staffed, too, so life happens.
After calling. Life after calling.
So at any rate, I just haven't seen one marked that way, so I had some questions, and I had done some emailing as well. But I will put the process for this on the agenda for safety next month, just that we can be aligned better with the police department, and that we don't have weird circumstances. So, um, I looked this one up as well in CCAP, and I agree that I get that it's a recommendation. And I don't see, those checks were actually written in 1998, so they cleaned everything up in 2007, so it was even kind of older than that.
During your boarding, where are you?
I was less than a year old.
So are you making a motion to approve these three?
I'll make an emotion to approve all three as provided in the packet.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just got one question. This, this person that, um, had a underage alcohol violation. In, uh, one of 2023, and then, um, on the back it said cited for absolute sobriety. Isn't that a kind of real bike that's okay to drink that for?
There's a, there's, there is the, the police department and their very large, I don't even know what they call it, policies and procedures. I don't know. They got a rule. They, they have a policy and procedure to hire you. So, um, I, I do have an old copy of, um, what Joe Adamson had used, uh, was using as a process. And so there's, it, it's a pretty strict guideline as to how you're gonna deny or why you would deny an operator license. And, I mean, I would assume that, that Sarge would have looked at these. I mean, the one of them on here...
The only thing I would think, Solison, is that they are, they're not serving it.
Yeah, they are. Operator serves alcohol.
But where they're gonna look in the work, they don't serve, they just sell alcohol.
The person he was talking to was Robert Rattell.
Well, this is the quick trip.
It's not, it's not...
It's quick trip.
Oh.
No, that was quick trip. Yeah.
Oh.
Robert Rattell didn't have anything in it.
Oh, sorry, no. Oh, that one? So that one's the, that one was the only offense, and you can't turn somebody down for one offense if it was.
I will say, I think it was when Marshke was in chair for the safety, Amy showed us the break about it.
Yeah, I mean...
There is a policy there.
Yeah.
There's already a policy there. It just wasn't...
It's been, that, we've had a policy there for years. Back to Joanne, is that when?
Yeah, you were.
I mean, all you have to do is follow it.
You bet.
And I'm sure it's still there somewhere.
It wasn't the committee that wasn't following it. I just, I, well, the committee, but I don't know if Randy saw it either.
Sergeant?
Yeah.
I'm not naming names.
Okay, Sergeant.
Well, maybe the sergeant didn't know anything about the policy.
I mean, he had a lot thrown at him all at once.
You might understand that policy was a guideline. Yeah, it's only a guideline.
And just like their recommendation for denial and approval is.
Right, as Kristen said, it still comes on to the six of us making that call. We override them.
All right.
This is a motion to approve all three of these operator license applications.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, Bryce seconded it. Yes, Bryce seconded it. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
All right, 31, acting on the financial statement for January, Forrest.
Motion to approve the financial statement for January 2024 is provided in your packet.
Second. Any comments? All right, Doc, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
And 32, is acting on the bills for January, Forrest.
Motion to approve the bills for January 2024 in the amount of $4,247,267.51.
Second.
All right, any comments? All right, Doc, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye. Second.
Anyone want to state? All right, if not, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
All right, picture.